Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call those Orangeburg County Council Meeting of September 16, 2019 to order. We're gonna ask Councilwoman Wimbley to give us a moment of thanks before we move forward.
We will bow with deep praise. Father, thank you for the beauty and glory that day, Lord, this opportunity that we come together as a council to work on different items, Lord, that might benefit us as citizens of our community and for our county. Father of all, we've worked together to improve the quality of life for all our citizens. We ask your guidance and direction. The things that we say and do might be pleasing in your sight. Serve our fellow man. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Wimbley. I hope each and every one of you have had the opportunity to look at the minutes of the September 3 meeting. And if you see any notation or changes need to be, please say so now. If not, I would appreciate the motion as a second that those minutes be received as written.
Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and seconded by Mr. China Ravenel. That minutes of September 3 meeting you receive as written, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposes, ayes have it, and the motion is carried. And we'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight. And as always, at the beginning of our meeting, we have public comments in two areas. Public comments of agenda items, public comments of other matters. If that agenda item have a public hearing on it, as stated in item 1, you will wait until we get there to make your comment. If not, any other items on the agenda you would like to comment, you may push for them at this time. Every none, we'll close that and open the agenda for public comments of other matters. That mean if there's anything at all you would like to address council on, any other matters you may have pushed for them, H and M, and the items that you want to address. Cut, Councilwoman.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Pauline Darby, and I live at 1780 Saxton Road. I would first like to address one issue that is being worked on, and that is my next little neighbor. And I would like to just thank Councilwoman Dolores Frazier for acting so quickly on this matter. And she knows what it is, so I don't want to say publicly what it is. But she's been acting on it. The other thing I want to say is for the animal control. I have several about five dogs that's running rampant in my neighborhood. They go from house to house. I don't know who owns them. However, they're making a mess in our yards. They're doing their business in our yards. And they're rubbing out our grass because they're making their home in our yard. I'm not against animals, but I don't want pets, and I don't want them in my yard. And I want the animal control to do something about that. I started about in May of calling the animal control concerning this issue. I was giving a runaround at first. However, when I told them I was coming to the county meeting, then that's when they start doing some work. So now, they did come out today, set the trap. I don't know how efficient it's going to be because he put it in the back of my house. The animals are on the side of my house, on both sides. But I understand he doesn't want to put the trap where folks can steal it. So I understand that. But however, I do want the issue cleared up because the animals are, when it's not spayed, or it's not noodled, and the next thing you know, we're gonna have some more animals in our neighborhood. So if you will please get behind the animal control and help them to get these animals out of our neighborhood. And again, thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Get the animals out of the neighborhood. And that's not the only one in my area. There's one down on Shopperson Street as well that I've already called and complained about. The dogs running rampant and on loops and stuff, and no one seems to be able to put their hands on who they are and who they belong to. I don't know. But we're working on it.
Thank you. Any other items? If not, we'll close the portion of public comments and go into our regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is an ordinance, the third reading. This is an ordinance to reappeal fireworks audits. Administrator, you want to summarize that for those who may not have been at the last two meetings, or certain attorney, whoever?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is an ordinance that basically will streamline the process and give the individuals the right places to go and put the fireworks stands and all the things that comes along with permitting and aspects of it in the wheelhouse of the fire services, which should be, our code on that was antiquated, and we will be updated.
Thank you so much, Councilor. Anybody have any questions? If not, could I get a motion as second that we pass this audit for third reading?
Second.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we pass this fireworks audit.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Willie B. Orange, seconded by Mr. Dolores Frazier, that we pass fire audits to reappeal the fireworks, as explained by the Administrator, all in favor, let's say aye. Opposes, ayes have it, motion is carried. Next item is an ordinance in the third reading also, but this item have a public hearing with it. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement to buy and sell real estate by between Orangeburg and Dogwood Creek Land Holding LLC pertaining to certain real property owned by Orangeburg County, authorizing the sale of such real property by the county to Dogwood Creek Land Holding LLC and other matters relating there too. First, we will have an explanation or summary by either the Administrator or the Attorney, then we will open it forth for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I give it to the Attorney. This is the third reading of an ordinance and a subject of public hearing, an issue dealing with the approval of the purchase of a property owned by Orangeburg County by Dogwood Creek. This agreement was negotiated in conjunction with the amendments to the projects Bowman, projects, Project Palmetto Plains, and Project Huntley. Remember, those three projects were recently amended. The prospect agreed to purchase this surplus property from the county.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the Attorney? Okay. Thank you so much. Now the floor, the floor is open for public hearing. Anybody from the public has any comments on this item? Every none, we will ask for a motion as second for our third reading.
Move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Harry Wimbley, seconded by Mr. Herbert Livingston for third reading on the ordinance authorizing the sale of the land. All in favor, say aye. And any opposes, ayes have it.
A question is, I know you mentioned the word sale. Does sale or lease agreement, that's sale?
Sale.
It is.
Twenty years, I think.
Yes, sir.
Twenty years.
The ayes have it, the motion is passed. Thank you so much. Third item is the second reading, and this is an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Chapter 12 of the Court of Law of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad laurian taxes agreement by and between Orangeburg County and Project O.S. as a sponsor and one or more sponsor affiliates who provide for a fee in lieu of ad laurian taxes incentive and certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county. Second amendment of the existing amended and reinstated agreement for the development of a joint county industrial park by and between Orangeburg County and Dorchester County to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property located in Orangeburg County. Administrator or Attorney, whoever, want to explain those again, those who may not have been at it?
Your ordinance before you seeks to approve a fee agreement and also place the project in an industrial park, multi-county industrial park. The prospect wishes to remain anonymous at this time, wants to construct a solar farm on approximately 750 acres of property to produce 75 megawatts of energy. The location is generally east of I-26, south of Asteria Road, approximately 12 miles southeast of Orangeburg. This project is located in District 2. There's a capital investment of a minimum of 82 million. There is no new jobs that has been associated with our products as a result of this project. The 82 million will be expensed in solar panels and related equipment. They're seeking a 40-year term fee in lieu in the industrial park they're seeking to enter into as the multi-county industrial park with Dorchester and Orangeburg County. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Give us the location of that one again. Do we got its O.S. and O.C. coordinates?
Yes, sir. What I have, I have approximately seven TMS numbers. It's outside of Bowman, from what I understand. It's in District 2. The best that I have, Chairman, is east of I-26, approximately 12 miles southeast of Orangeburg.
Okay. Tell me, this is Project O.S.?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
All right. Otherwise, the next one is gonna be O.C. So I just wanted to, you've gotten that, you've heard the explanation. Any more questions besides? Not, could I get a motion as second for passing of this second reading?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, seconded by Mr. Wimbley, that we pass second reading on Project O.S., as explained by the Attorney, all in favor, let's say aye. And opposedes, ayes have it, motion is carried. Item 4 is an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Chapter 44 of the Court of Law of South Carolina, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad laurian taxes agreement by and between Orangeburg County and this is Project O.C. as sponsor and one or more sponsor affiliates who provide for a fee in lieu of ad laurian taxes incentive and certain special source revenue credit for the benefit of a project in the county. Amendment of the existing amendment and reinstated agreement for the development of a joint county industrial park, again, between Orangeburg and Dorchester County. Basically, same as the previous one that we just passed. It's just a different project. One's O.S., one's O.C. So the Attorney, it's the same thing, right?
It is. It mirrors the same project, but again, it's another solar farm that mirrors the first. It too will be constructed on approximately 750 acres of land. Again, we have a minimum investment of 82 million, which would consist of construction of solar panels and related equipment. They are seeking a 40-year term when it comes to the fee in lieu on this project also. The difference here is that this project is still located in District 2, but what I have is it's east of I-26, south of Highway 301, approximately nine miles southeast of Orangeburg.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anything east of Orangeburg other than the solar farm?
Well, Mr. Lawrence, I think you-
You're young enough to live. I'm not sure I'm allowed to live there.
Well, I think somebody said that we're gonna be the solar capital of the state here.
Safe, sir. So it would have been-
Established.
Dave, I couldn't hear Councilman Wimbley. One time you were dead against two or three of them.
Where they come to start thinking like the kind of thing. What it is, even though the majority of the solar farms is located in District 2, that's kind of not by chance. I'd like for somebody to explain to the public why they are locating the area that they're locating in.
It's my-
Yes.
No, go ahead. Sorry. But it has to do with the main transmission line.
Yes, sir.
And where the company can link in the energy that's produced easily to a main transition line. So it's about location.
My reason for saying that and want it to be said is because it's not, it is low District 2, is the reason for it.
It also has to do with the purchase power agreement with the power companies. Particular power company have to be willing to purchase the power back from the solar grid. And the solar grid has to be as such where the lines that are established have to be strong enough to accept the power and push power through the grid from the solar to the electrical company.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Not, could I get a motion as second for passing item?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, seconded by Mr. Livingston, that we pass Project O.S. O.C., I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye. And opposedes, ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number 5 is an ordinance amending, an ordinance number 2015-11-16-31 to prohibit the following activities in commercial property doing certain hours: sale, consumption, and/or possession of alcohol beverages. Madam Attorney, I guess that she'll give a quick synopsis for those who may not have been here at previous meetings.
I will, and I'm happy to help make a historical record for when the tickets are actually given out for this. We'll be turning to this transcript when people argue about grandfathering. In 2015, the county passed an ordinance regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00. The original title did not include possession of alcohol, so we'd like to amend the title to include possession of alcohol. That was in the text, just not in the title. And we wanted to take out the limitation that was in the original, which was it only applied to commercial establishments licensed to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption. In August, our August 19 meeting, the Orangeburg County Sheriff's Office, as well as someone who was a member of the public, reported that in order to avoid being ticketed, there are some proprietors who turned in their liquor licenses. And they're now allowing people to bring their own alcohol. And the purpose of this ordinance is to stop that, not just stop what we originally had, but to stop this change that is going on. And so it is to address a current problem, and no one would be grandfathered. The Sheriff's Office has requested those changes. I've written them, and they've been reviewed by the Sheriff's Office. And as far as I know, this is exactly the way they want it to be stated.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Yes, Chairman.
My question, Madam Attorney, I notice you have commercial properties. That's the only property that only disinfective error is gonna be?
That's correct.
That's all?
Yes, and there's, commercial property is defined as anything that's not residential. So if it's not residential, it would count as a commercial property.
You know, we, when we look at the way the county's zone and certain areas are zoned commercially, and that could give the goal on other than mostly just commercial areas. That's why I'm asking.
And that's why we've defined commercial to include all property that is non-residential.
Yeah, but I understand when you said commercial and non-commercial. If you got an interstate and a crossroad, and you got stoles around that boundary, that's considered commercial. But if you got a place out in the country, that's not commercial property. And it may not be residential, if it's a residence. So that's gonna be okay.
Let me answer it this way. When I talked to our planning director, or rather, the division director, Mr. Hall, he was able to help me understand that the zoning definitions that we're using, that is not what this is about. This literally is every property that's non-residential. So if there was a house in a residential, whether it's rented or not, that's fine. But if it is for any other purpose other than a residence, then it would count under this ordinance as you cannot sell, consume, or possess liquor between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m.
I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
You really be?
Mr. Willie, yeah.
No, my understanding about commercial, commercial can be located in the country as well as in the city. Am I right or am I wrong?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Secondly, those, this remnant is solved the problem that we were addressing.
According to the Sheriff's Office, this is the small step that they have asked for, and it would remedy the problem that they are dealing with.
Chairman, we need a big step. I don't think we should come back and visit this again because we haven't, it's half done. It need to be totally done, Attorney, and not half done. Thank you for your support, and thank you for your help.
Fringe, Mr. Orange.
I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Wimbley.
I think we might as well address it now, because the next thing that will happen, people will start having parties at the house all night long. It's coming. Right, Mr. Chair, that's another loophole.
Now, you can't tell me about having a party loud all night long.
Well, what I think to say is maybe we should let a resident have frequent parties. If it becomes every weekend, might be bad.
Mr. Wimbley, we do have a noise ordinance. We do have other ordinances that can address this kind of thing. What I understand the problem is, is when there is some density as to the population around where they're allowing people to bring in liquor, is that people are relieving themselves in the properties that are around there. They're engaging in other activities that scare the residents that are around there. So that is something that I've not heard a lot of complaints about with regard to residential inviting. And I am not aware that that is a problem. I'm sure that is. The Sheriff's Office wants to address it.
Not yet.
Have you heard the explanation by the Attorney? You've heard all the comments? Could I get a motion as second?
Second.
Motion, do you motion it?
Oh, I make a-
Make a motion?
Two times, motion.
Okay. Second. Everybody get a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Willie B. Orange, that we pass all this second reading. All in favor, let be known by raising your hand. You got it? Got Ms. Frazier's explanation? Are you gonna be raising your hand? All right. Okay, so this is a amendment. It's okay. Thank you.
Right, wait.
And the motion passed. Thank you so much.
Nobody can say it.
Okay, next, item number six is an ordinance, and this is the second reading and the public hearing on this one. And this is an ordinance to enlarge the boundaries of a joint industrial and business park established by and between Orangeburg and Dorchester, as to add property located in Orangeburg County, which is Quality Models, S.C. And item 7 is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee and agreement between Orangeburg County and Quality Models, providing for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, issues of special source revenue credits, and other matters related there too. So item 6 and 7, Madam, Mr. Attorney, is related, right?
Yes, they are.
We can carry those together, and you can give us a brief summary for those who don't understand what they're saying at this point.
Yes, sir. May I please, Council, the two ordinances before you. One seeks to place this expansion in a multi-county industrial park. Number 7 seeks to approve the fee agreement by which the county is, or the prospect is seeking incentives. Quality Models, South Carolina Inc., is seeking to expand its plastic injection molding with a new line. They have promised a minimum capital investment of 9.3 million, which consists of 1.3 in land and building, and 8 million in machinery and equipment. They promised a minimum of 37 new jobs. They are seeking a 30-year term when it comes to being the park, which they're seeking to, of course, expand, is the multi-county industrial park between Dorchester County and Orangeburg County.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Questions, concerns from anyone? Not, could I get a, first, I'm sorry, we got public hearing. Anyone for public hearing? Every none, we close that portion of it, and I would appreciate a motion as second that we pass 6 and 7.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Herbert, seconded by Mr. Dolores, that we pass items 6 and 7, as explained by the Attorney. All in favor, please say aye. And opposedes, ayes have it, and motion is carried. Item number 8 is an ordinance also, but this is the first reading, and this is an ordinance authorizing purchase, acquisition, installation, and service of certain equipment, execution and delivery of all documents necessary to carry out the lease purchase financing for the same equipment and other related matters.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In delivering, service delivery for EMS, it's necessary for us to purchase gurneys that are manufactured by Striker Corporation. We found it in our best interest financially to lease these gurneys as a part of the lease proposal. And after legal review and consultation with our financial advisors, felt like it would be better to do an ordinance because of some of the total payments would be above the aggregate that we could approve and present it to you for.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Council questions, concern about this authorization? Ordinance, first reading?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would only point out that the next item on the agenda, the resolution, is the same topic, and you may want to go ahead and pass the vote.
Thank you so much, Madam Attorney. The resolution for that is authorizing the purchase, it's the same reading, so I don't need to read the whole thing over again. It's all, both of them, once, first reading of the ordinance, and the other one is the resolution authorizing the ordinance to do this. No questions from anyone. I would appreciate a motion as second for items 8 and 9.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Willie B. Orange, that we pass items 8 and 9, as explained by the Administrator and Attorney. All in favor, please let be known by saying aye. And opposedes, ayes have it, and motion is carried. Item number 10 is Planning Commission Report Regarding Rezoning Request, and it says the consideration of a request from Jonathan Joe Davis to rezon property located at Garden Gate Road, Tax Map Number 0362-00-05-001 in Utah, South Carolina, from Forest Agriculture to Commercial General District for the purpose of establishing a car dealership. Who does that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This project was presented at the Planning Commission meeting on September 11, 2019. As stated before, the request is coming from Jonathan Joe Davis for consideration of rezoning from forest and agriculture to commercial general. The Planning Commission was unable to come to a recommendation because of the fact that there was a motion made and rightfully seconded, but the votes were split two to two with an abstention. So therefore, this is coming to you with no recommendation from the Planning Commission, and County Council has the next step to move in.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. That's, that's in my district, and I think, I just, I got someone else, and Council have some comments. I just feel like it needs to go back to sort of the mission and do some further study or look into it and see if they can come back with a resolution, what they think or the reason why they think they're gonna wanna do it, and see if we can come up with some kind of balance, see if we can make it work.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should follow the same instruction we do when we want to send in the other item back to the commission.
Besides sending it back to them, what do you thought?
What would we do with other items that we want to send back?
We send it back.
Okay.
Throw it back to them.
Send it back to them?
That's what I just said. I recommend that we send it back.
But the Planning Commission here, can we get a response?
I still move.
I still had to get a response.
Well, you can. We can, we'll move in second. Can I get a second?
I move that we send it back.
Sorry. Moved by Mr. Orange, seconded by- Moved by Mr. Orange, and second by Mr. Livingston, that we send it back, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My question is, Mr. Planning Commission is?
Brothers, I'm Joe Davis, so you're saying we have to go back to what I did the other night?
I need to, yeah, I mean, we, I don't know, we didn't get, I didn't get a, go ahead, Richard. Misses, that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your, in your packet, you should have a staff recommendation, and the caution here is that we do have a commission, and that's what they are there for to review these. But as part of the process, staff goes through a process, and the planning director, Ms. Severs, went through the process and went through this, and staff, and she brought this to my attention, and we discussed it, and staff has a concern that this falls squarely into what we call spot zoning. It's just taking a piece of property that is not surrounded by any commercial use whatsoever zoning-wise and changing it to a different zoning classification, and it treats a particular piece of property differently than other pieces of property in the area are treated. So the staff, the staff recommendation was that it not be approved, but like I said, this is a, that's what you have the Planning Commission for, for them to review each one of these and make a recommendation to council. We didn't have a full planning commission that evening, the chairman of the Planning Commission was not there. It's certainly well within your purview to send it back to the Planning Commission for another look and another vote, and that's something that we've done in the past, so that's entirely up to you, which you guys just voted in to do. So that is what is going to happen, and we'll take a look at it and, you know, add any more notes and comments. We'll have, we'll go through the process of having a public hearing again, because that will be part of that whole process, and we'll work through that whole thing again and bring it back to you.
Well, Mr. Richard, and if I overlook, I apologize, because I thought, I guess what I read was that it was a big vote, and there was no resolution on it. I didn't realize, maybe I missed something that you all had already disapproved.
No, sir, no, sir. There, what I'm saying is that staff doesn't feel like it's an appropriate request, not the Planning Commission, not the Planning Commission.
It was a tie, the commission tied, and the first stayed from over.
That's what I thought, okay. So now you have explained it, so what you really saying is that you all don't recommend because of that kind of situation?
Yes.
Plus, there were two absent.
And did you all explain that to the commission?
Yes, yes.
Why, but it still was split?
Yes.
What did the public comment?
Obviously, the person that, you know, wants to do it was there in favor of it. There was, Amanda, do we have one or two?
Two.
Two people came to speak against it.
Against?
One of the neighbors, next door neighbor located at 1141 Garden Gate Road, stated she does not feel the car lot should be allowed at that location. She stated that the area has always been a family-owned and peaceful community, and she was concerned that that would upset the neighborhood. And another neighbor at 1149 Gardens Gate Road also spoke in opposition.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Severs, we appreciate what you all did. We're not trying to recycle you.
No, sir, that's absolutely.
Yeah, we'll make a process, we'll head through it again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is official action, this grant approval. We have, the first one is eight, let me ask a question, Mr. Administrator, do these, these items need to be separately, or we can just include them all, or you later explain them all and take them all up some?
I can explain them all, and you can take them in a lump sum.
Okay. Go ahead on, and if they, I mean, it's kind of separate, explain to it, but for others, maybe you and I just summarize a little further, and we'll, I'll open this up with a question from the council, and then we'll move on.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The instrument to do all we can to keep adequate equipment for the county for the purposes of servicing the citizens, and also being, being a case where we minimize the impact to the citizens from the tax purposes. We have been working for years with USDA, and we have put in grants to apply for USDA funding to supplement some equipment and vehicles for training purposes that the county has been awarded through grants from the USDA Rural Development Program. The first grant was $50,000 to assist with the purchase of two yard dogs and mini excavator and tow behind lift, $49,900 to assist with the purchase of an X-ray body camera for the new detention center, $32,900 to supplement the purchase of vehicles identified previously in the vehicle bond, and $47,000 grant to assist with the purchase of new rescue tools for emergency services. The total of these grants pretty much saved the citizens of Orangeburg County almost $179,800 worth of monies that's coming from USDA, that does not have to come from the general fund. And we have a representative from USDA here tonight, Mr. George Rich Stand, that has been working with us, still a deputy union on that project, as well as all our other projects dealing with broadband wastewater and other things, and I would like to personally thank USDA for your assistance with that and helping us obtain these grants.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. We also have Mr. McFady here, from our local office.
Thank you, Mr. McFady, we appreciate all the, anything else you all can help us with, because you know, we're full of money.
Yes, sir, that's why we're here.
Grants rider, USDA Rural Development for, for, the county for applying for it and to, for our receiving these grants, $179,000 is a lot of money to not come out of our general funds.
Yes, ma'am.
The taxpayer would have really been hit kind of hard had that money had to come out of our general fund percent, but thank God that we have a grants rider, whoever doesn't write well, and somebody who understands our needs.
It's a combined effort of different departments that were requesting information, and I think Mr. Angel Howell was spearheading, along with Ms. Angela Terr, the process of getting all this together, and Mr. Billy Staley and several other department and division directors worked together to get this done.
Any other comments, questions? Not, can I get a motion of second to pass this official action of grant approval as explained?
So will, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Mr. Willoughby, that we pass this grant approval, and all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes, ayes have it, and motions carried. Thank you so much. Appointment of board and commission and committees, and I will kneel to the district to, person to appoint, human relations person to the district. Could I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rabanel, second by Mr. Orange, that we appoint Ms. Marshall, both to Human Relations Council, the district two. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes, ayes have it, and motions carried. Before we, we have a vote for executive session for economic development update, for foreign projects, which is Project Cobra, Project Yalla, Project OS, and Project OC. Also, item two, contractual matter concerning Samaritan House, and item three, contractual matter concerning employment, employment matters. This is legal under the basic four-year guideline. Can I get a motion of second that we go into executive session for those items there?
Okay, I move that we do.
It is moved by Mr. Willoughby Orange, and second by Mr. Rabanel, that we pass the last item, move on executive session update, and other contractual matters, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes, ayes have it, and motions carried. Now, before we adjourn, we have the president of South Carolina State College in the audience, and we would like to allow him, if he would want to say anything or make any comments, we're glad to see you here tonight, and if you have anything you would like to say to us, we would appreciate hearing. Yeah, you're right, it's good to be here.
First of all, it's wonderful to be here. First of all, thank Ms. Frige for reminding me, keeping, keeping the time, I was in Florida earlier today, and had a meeting with, also had a meeting with the new head of the Commission on Higher Education on behalf of the university, and that was going a bit long, but I did get the reminder message from my office, and I had promised I would be here, I promised her, I promised Mr. Orange that I would be here, and promised everyone, and the chair that I would be here, and so I, I'm keeping my word.
Thank you.
But it turns out, actually, I have some, maybe some good news, that could be some future good news for Orangeburg, and I will speak with the appropriate people later on as it moves forward. Some of you may or may not know that I'm one of the 12 people in the nation that's on the White House Presidential Board of Advisors for HBCUs, unless we had a board meeting. One of the things that we talked about is leveraging opportunity zones, especially those that are in or that contain or in or are adjacent to, because we have a particular interest in adjacent to HBCUs. And there's an opportunity zone, obviously, here in Orangeburg area that is adjacent to an HBCU, and there's some positive things that are going to be happening there that will actually significantly improve what we think will be leveraging the opportunity zone for here. So that's one of the things that we discussed, we're gathering up a lot of information, there's several of us that were pushing, pushing for that, that push for that, are very supportive of that, and who said was the right person I'd like to meet with. It's not something that happens right now, but it's something just, this is hot off the press that we're doing, and I knew it was related, would relate to us, and I just happened to be able to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, anybody have questions?
Yes, I have any questions. President Clark, I would like to say thank you very much for coming. I'd like to say I think I'm the only activist that's on this panel up here, and I'm the only one that will speak to the issues. We're very glad to see you here, and my thing is, please continue to come.
I will.
I want to say thank you very much, and you must come back. We'd like to see you spend more time here in the Orangeburg community. We would like to see you coming to churches, we would like to see you coming to more of our board meetings, we'd like to see you just coming around, be in Orangeburg and being with us.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Brother, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to elaborate that, just for the record's sake, that we've been doing a lot of projects with South Carolina State University, and we just, with the last meeting, tax and tourism funded significant amounts of funds to the athletic department for promotional activities and things to be along with the university, and shortly coming up, Youth Day is going to be upon us, and we typically support South Carolina State during Youth Day, and the use of Orangeburg County, so that will be coming forward to you, but we will, we will definitely do our best to make you proud and go out there and represent Orangeburg County and the community over on the campus of South Carolina State.
Ren Shoppers, Snap Person?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You know, that I am the owner of the business on Chestnut that I think you guys were talking about in council probably about a month ago, and I've done everything, you know, in my power to create a safe environment for the people who come and participate with that facility.
So, your name and what business you're talking about?
Atlantis, it's on Chestnut. You know, I've worked tirelessly in this community, I've been a business owner in this community for more than 30 years, and I certainly, you know, try to do everything in my power to keep the citizens and the patrons that come to my facility safe. You know, we've instituted security details that check vehicles and different things for weapons to ensure the safety of the people that come to the property. I just wanted to say for the record that, you know, violence and the gun violence in particular that's going on in the community, you know, is not part and parcel of what we have going on there. You know, it's not an issue of alcohol or an issue of just reckless behavior or whatever, but as grownups, you know, we should have a right to, you know, be free to socialize, you know, and to require law-abiding citizens that have to, you know, be restricted as though they are criminals, you know, to 2:00 or 3:00, or they can't be on, you know, someone else's property. You know, I just ask that you guys just consider, you know, this is America, and, you know, of course, they created a constitution with, you know, freedoms of press and religion and association and all these different things, you know, so that governmental bodies can, you know, reduce the people to regulating them as though they were, you know, slaves or anything else or whatever. So I just think that, you know, people having the freedom of choice, you know, free marketplace society should be, you know, it is a hallmark of what America is, and, you know, and I just hope that you guys don't lose sight of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ren, we appreciate your comment. Thank you so very much. Any other comments, or any council person before we close?
You go, Jerry.
Good second. Moved by Mr. Willoughby, second by Mr. Rabanel, that we adjourn. Thank you all so very much for attending our meeting.